I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the June 6th Town of Wakefield Planning Board meeting. And open to any public comment other than what's on the agenda or something other or something that's not on the agenda. Not hearing any, but I'd like to take it a little bit, nothing out of order, I guess. We're gonna take the conceptual review first. Carol Kelly Mowers. Mowers?
Mowers.
Mowers, sorry. Mowers for Wakefield Marketplace, White Mountain Highway, signs for nonprofit business. So, go ahead.
Okay, so I am the current president of Wakefield Marketplace for all of you that know these inspectors started that next year or 25 years ago. It has been on that piece of land for almost that entire time. And in the course of being in Wakefield, because I just moved up here in 2016, we've been members for a couple of years. And I have noticed that even going around our own community, there's a lot of people here that don't know we're there. I do physical therapy over at White Mountain. And my therapist drives by all the time, have no idea. And right now, what we notice with traffic is we're pretty much a drive-by, so we try and get their attention. Well, we have signs that we're attaching out there, but I'm trying to do everything by myself. I've contacted the state, the state referred me to Wakefield, Wakefield referred me to the state, the state referred me to the DOT. And what we're looking for is, we are 20 consecutive weeks from Memorial Day to Columbus Day, Saturdays only, for six hours only, we've put signs out, and as long as we're not obstructing anything, I think we're good to go. So, I have a picture here to show you what we've been doing. Wakefield is constantly evolving, but we wanna get people to stop because what we do at Wakefield Market is agriculture and artisans that are growing the community. And we're celebrating that next year for 25 years. So, we're putting a brochure out now to ask people to join us to celebrate our 25th anniversary. And we also offer, for our members and for the community, grants to help them learn new products, new methods of farming, new techniques for the products that they make. And so, what we're trying to do is grow the community inside, but we are asking for help from outside because we need the consumers to stop and visit. So, we get a lot of comments like, "We didn't even know you were here, we went by and saw you, we turned around and came back." So, we hear a lot of that. So, what we're looking to do is to let them know that we are here. Here's a picture of, one of our artisans did open signs, and we attach them to the state signs below, and we put them up a half hour before the market starts and take them down a half hour after the market is over. And, can you see that okay? Yeah? Okay. So, we did PVC piping, it goes into metal, we take the metal stakes out, we take the PVC pipe out, everything's attached with bungee cords, it's clean, it's neat, and it's a really high-end presentation compared to what we've been doing in the past, which is post-it signs, you know, on the corrugated cardboard that floats. So, what we're trying to do is elevate the level of our membership. Currently, we have 42 members. And that's a supplemental income for a lot of us that are low-income. And to be able to get people to stop, and for me, even the process of finding out what I had to do to do these signs, I've learned about the history of Wakefield. And I had no idea we were on the National Historic Register. I had no idea that Wakefield community itself, as it evolves, has gotten the buildings accepted by the state of New Hampshire. So, I'm learning about Wakefield as I live here, but there's people, especially history buffs, that are missing everything, and we have an opportunity to bring them in at that corner. So, the visibility is a high-end thing for us. And we have gotten recently a grant from Champions of New Hampshire Farms to produce a brochure. And we have also joined New Hampshire May. So, we are going to be putting those brochures in the information centers in 95 North and South. And we are looking at coming up with the funds to distribute it in the north country, which costs $2,000 a year. And to do the entire Lakes region, it's $4,000 a year. So, we got the money to produce it, we're trying to come up with the money to distribute it, but by joining New Hampshire May, we have at least outlets. So, now what we're trying to do is get the people directed to where they need to go, which is to us. So, these signs, as you can see, the yellow is a real eye-catcher that lets them know we're coming up shortly. They're just before and just after, we're not obstructing any views, but we're trying to get the attention for our vendors to be able to increase their sales so we can do more for the community. So, that's what we're all about, and we are looking for variance so that we can keep those signs out just for those hours on that Saturday. Okay? Any questions?
Does anybody have any question?
So, from a zoning standpoint, what's allowed?
Okay, so as far as the state with Route 16 is a 75 right-of-way, from the center line of Route 16 to 75. I spoke to two people at DOT, and they seem to think that as long as the signs are not obstructing the view coming off of 153 onto 16, so I mean, they could protrude a little bit into that 75, they didn't seem that that would be a big problem. And as far as local zoning, Article 21 under signs, Section C exempt signs, there's three different places I think we could bring it in that it would require anything. I think this is a great thing. I think maybe even a conversation with Pam Wiggins of the Historical Society, you know, maybe to coordinate the brochure thing, I think it's...
It's on that sign off the highway with the blue signs there, that say there's other things...
What she's talking about is...
Would it make sense to put...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just wouldn't it make sense to put one up that says the marketplace is there with that, so it kind of all...
Yeah, but it does, people drive by those all the time. What they're looking for is just a sign that says, "Here we are, we're open." You know, they do have a sign on the stand itself.
I can answer that because I asked her about putting the blue signs out. You can put your blue sign out, but any time that you're not open, you're supposed to cover that blue sign, which means that sign would be closed and covered for five days, six days a week, except for that Saturday, and we would have to put the blue sign over it when we close, then we'd have to take that sign off. So, by doing it the other way, we're drawing attention to the fact that the hours that were open, nine to three, Saturdays only, and the open sign so they, you know, ahead so they can slow down and it won't ruin the traffic pattern. That gives them the time to turn, which is another thing I have to address with you guys, I just need to mention it. We have a drop-off there. Is it okay to go to the DOT and get some dirt and put it there? Because right now, we're almost a foot dropping off the pavement on that corner, and there's a pothole coming around the corner that'll eat your tires.
That's a... That's a state issue.
Yeah, it's a state road, yeah.
Okay, so I'll take care of that with the state, then. I'm not afraid to talk to anybody, and if you call the state, they'll tell you they've talked to you.
You just wanna go talk to Kenny down at the state shed on that one.
Yeah. So, but anyway, so that's what we're looking for, is we're looking for a higher visibility. With your t-shirt sitting at this table, you're very noticeable, and everything else that we've put out there is employing that...
He's also tall, isn't he?
I was gonna say, that's probably short.
But, you understand what I'm saying? So, what we're trying to do is say, "Slow down, it's just ahead." And that's what we're trying to do, give them time to react, we don't want any accidents, but we do need the business to support the town and to redirect the town. And like I said, I'm learning things about this town, I have no clue. Lenny is a history buff, he's also, very fortunately, a cooking guy. And we found this information out from the Wakefield Marketplace cookbook that Nancy Spencer Smith put together, and from the Town of Wakefield cookbook that he recently recovered from the recycle center. So, I've been learning a lot thanks to him, but I also am learning a lot from the members. So, I really wanna do the town, you know, the service of doing things correctly, and, you know, bringing in people so that we can also redirect them to other businesses so that the chamber, you know, gets some coverage, so that the people coming into open businesses get the traffic flow, and that they know you're here, because we are so drive-by right now. People don't know this town is here, they know Wakefield Diner, they know Poor People's Public, they've come here forever, and they know where the town line is for all safety because the mountains start there. So, we wanna say, "You guys are missing a lot." So, we're happy to work with you to do that for you.
Well, we're all set here, and I know Victor and Russ have been all set with you guys with the signs, so, you know...
We're good?
Yeah, we're good, and good luck.
Thank you. And I will definitely talk to her because I think that's something that people really need, because I have friends that are history freaks, I would love this town. So, Pam Wiggins did it, and I'll talk to her. We did our brochure, Lakes Region Technology Center is amazing, and they're really happy to do the projects for us. So, thank you all for your time, thank you for your acknowledgement of our efforts, and we'll get on with your business. I'm good. Thank you all for all you guys doing.
So, next on the agenda, I'd like to take the time, because Russ and Victor also have a couple of escrow releases. So, what do you got?
Okay, so, we'll go real quick. Okay, so, I've got, this is for Philip Emilio subdivision. Yep, okay, notice a decision's been issued, the 30 days are up, so we're looking to return planning services and recording fees back to him.
Okay, so how much?
$500 for the planning service, and then there was $51 on the recording fees. The reason for the return on the recording fees is there was a mistake was made, and the subdivision had four sheets to the Mylar, we only charged them for one sheet, and it's charged per page. So, what we did is, and because of the time restraints in getting the money released, what we did is, they brought in a check for the correct amount. So, we're just returning what we took in for the recording fees. So, it was a total of $551 to Emilio. And there's an email in there of my conversation with Philip.
Does anybody wanna sneak a peek at it, or entertain a motion?
So...
To release the funds back to Emilio?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any unanimous?
Okay, Edward and Tina Nason from Moose Mountain Farm, same thing, notice a decision, 30 days are up, and we're just returning $150 of professional planning services.
Make motion to Carrie?
Carrie, $150 for Nason, a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Or any further discussion? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? All right.
And one more. This one was for Lance Moulton, Lakeview Marble and Granite, same thing, and we are releasing $250 for professionals' planning services for our site plan review.
Does this happen on all reviews? Do you get more than you normally would need, and then you give back?
So, yeah, normally, you know, we take in the professional planning services, so if we need to, it's there in the escrow to release the pay.
And then that's what escrow's for, to get it back, which is good.
And the 30 days are up for appeal, then we return it back. So, and it's just a case of getting it in the minutes so that we have it on record.
Yep, no, very good.
All right, so Nason was...
Moulton? Yeah, we did that one.
Yeah, we have Moulton, excuse me. Yeah, for granite, what's it called?
Wakefield Granite and Marble.
Granite and Marble.
entertain motion for $250 back to Wakefield Granite and Marble.
Some move?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. So now we got planning consultant Mike Garify for discussion on Wakefield zone ordinance. Sir Mike, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I know we've had some discussion lately, just a couple of things...
Well, I didn't agree to be on camera.
Oh, that's okay.
That's an extra charge.
He's giving my balls fall now.
Finds it in the way, though.
We just, we've had, you know, a slight, you know, with Charlie being here now versus Connie, you know, somewhat opposite, we got a new secretary that does our minutes for us, that's, you know, new a little bit, and we got Russ that is new to our board and town, and Victor's fairly new at the land use part of it, but growing tremendously over the last few months, I think, or even the last six months or so. Would you just stop doing this, what, a year ago, maybe?
Approximately.
Yeah. And so, you know, we got a big book, which you've helped us out with, and our zoning hasn't changed much, but our subdivision and site plan regs, we know you did a lot of work on, and Russ sometimes has a hard time interpreting them because they're ambiguous in some spots. And Russ is likes, Russ really likes to be black and white.
Black and white, that's what you're supposed to do, right?
So, but we thought we'd try to mesh us all together, try to see, you know, where we're going, what we're doing, and what we should be working on maybe by the end of the year or two, and things like that.
Yeah.
So, I know the biggest thing that we had, I don't know if you've got something for us, but the biggest thing we had was insignificant change of use. We know we have an application for it, but we had a hard time figuring out how to administer that in our regulations.
We moved those.
Okay.
We moved them into the site plan regs. The guy sent you an email referencing them, so I think for a while, there was a lot of these changes of uses that were coming to the planning board that I think we, the board at that time, determined that was a lot of time wasted potentially, not only the board's time, but an applicant's time, and sometimes opportunities were lost when folks were trying to rent out space. So, you get a building that's empty, trying to rent it, they've gotta now go through this long public hearing to go to the planning board, and all that sort of thing. So, the insignificant change of uses in your site plan review regs, and as long as they meet the criteria as determined by one of you two, then you can, they can be, the permit can just be issued. It doesn't need to go...
So, that was where we have, you know, under permitted use, if you read the legend table, P says permitted use, comma, subject to page nine.
In the zoning.
In the zoning. Says permitted use, subject to site plan review if required. Well, if that isn't about as confusing, who's gonna determine if required, subject to... So, that's very confusing. So...
So, you gotta go from here to your site plan review regs to the development regs. So, if it's permitted, oftentimes, it may not be, it may not require a site review, but there's a criteria in your, in your site review regs that talks about what's exempt, what's, when it's required, when it's required to be a major review, a minor review, or...
No review.
No review at all.
Okay.
And if I can get to it, whatever it are. So, so in that instance, Russ, it would be under section... Types of... I haven't looked at this in a while. I think it's listed under change of use, so not insignificant change of use, and then it describes insignificant as part of that section. So, scope of review type of site plan applications under page 20. As for instance, you hit under here, and that's where insignificant change of use is under. So, you've got types of applications, major site plans, minor, exempt, then you get into home enterprise, and then you get into insignificant change of use. So, these are all the types of quote-unquote site plans that you might encounter. Under, on page 22, section F is insignificant change of use, we had moved that, and we had changed it so that the land use clerk slash code enforced, code enforcement officer could address the criteria, 13 things. If it's determined in your opinion that they're, they're met, then it just gets signed off on. And the lieutenant can move into the building, or a new person can buy the building, and that use can then be carried out. If there's anything here that you're not quite sure about, then you bring it to the planning board and have that discussion then, as like an informal...
Yep. Which is what we do, we don't usually send people right in, we ask them to come in for conceptual first, because why spend all the money for an actual review to come here to find out you don't get?
But if it's, if it's crystal clear to you, to you guys, that they meet these criteria, then you don't even need to bother with the planning board. I think that was, that was the goal of the planning board at the time, was that we don't need to see every single change of use. Need all 13. That is, you know, you've got vacancies in a building, you wanna get those vacancies filled as fast as you can.
So, Mike, would you say we wouldn't, they would need to meet all 13?
They need to meet, that's what it says, and it's underlined, it says that change meets all of the following criteria.
So, if they don't meet one of these, then...
Then they've gotta go to the planning board for review.
Right. I know what used to happen a lot, just so you guys know, I know, like, previous chairman, Mr. Royal.
Yes.
He spent a lot of time, I think, like with Nate, Nate would always call him up, ask him, "What do you think of this?" So, if you guys can't, if you can, yeah, just call me, and, you know, I'll tell you, I'll tell you who I'm gonna side with. I'm just saying, I can break, help break the tie. If you guys are a little bit of disagreement there versus having to send them here, if we can do it that quick. You know, if we agree that, you know...
They meet all the criteria.
Yeah, and if we can at least talk about one that you don't think they might meet, we can talk about it and say, "Well, how about this, how about that?" Throw it around maybe before we have to...
We can meet the intent.
Yeah, right, before we have to go, come here with us. All right?
That's great.
So, there's a tiebreaker, I think that would, that would help out. And I remember Steve used to go in and meet all the time, or Nate would call him, or whatever, they'd call and just talk about it, just ask some questions. And if I think it's something difficult too, right away, I would tell him, "Just get it in here."
Yeah, we're just trying to make it a little more transparent to, you know, to the public, to the board.
Well, and you can document that in, you know, you get the applications, so you guys can document what you determine.
Yes.
You know, we determined they met all 13 criteria spelled out in section blah, 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 and we're issuing the permit on this date, I mean, as long as you're...
But he still can make that decision that if he came across two of these criterias that were in question, but like you said, the intent is really there for good, not for bad, and they still can over, they can kinda override that and make their decision, right?
Well, if they don't, if they don't, if there's a feeling that they don't meet one of the criteria, then they, that's the threshold, not meeting one of these is a threshold item to send the application to the planning boards, and the planning board makes the determination that, well, you know, we'll still give you a permit for a change of use, but it's not an insignificant change of use, it requires a public hearing and all that good stuff.
Right.
So, what the goal was to make it simple for...
Simple changes.
Simple changes, and so that you wouldn't have someone that wanted to get into, you know, the restaurant next door, whatever.
So, that's my point. My point is, the goal was always the intent of making it simple.
Correct.
Yes, but it's still, again, if there's something that they don't meet, and Russ and Victor are not comfortable with it, you can send it here and we can make a decision.
The trouble would be, if the previous business wasn't very active and the new one is, and the neighbors start complaining, and then they see something, "Oh, well, they changed the traffic flow or something significantly."
But they would be, they would go down through that criteria, and they would check it off, say, "All right, he meets us at the best that they can, and such and such and such, and I trust that they can make that decision."
The hardware store wants to turn into a Dunkin' Donuts, you know, that's probably gonna trigger a traffic issue. May not meet that criteria, as a for instance.
Hardware store is pretty...
It's busy, it's busy, but when you cut coffee involved, it's more...
I think when you get the neon lights, that's the problem.
I agree too, that that's probably in one of these criterias, the lights.
No, that's in the same one, it says...
So, it just has to do with the criteria, it has nothing to do with the type of business.
Absolutely.
In other words, you could have apples and then oranges could come in, for, you know...
Provided it's allowed.
Because we were thinking, you know, well, it's gotta be something that's a similar business that's in there before.
It's gotta be allowed in the zone. Orange is allowed in the zone.
And it just meets these criteria.
Yeah, as long as you can find that pigeonhole in the zone, in the, in the table of uses, that it fits in some category, you'll run into that situation once in a while too, where you'd be like, "Well, that's not even a use on the table," because obviously, things change over time, businesses evolve, and...
I mean, it's, it's kinda hard to make 97 pages of confusing French transparent to the public, so...
Well, I'll give you one that we had today that came in, a resident came in, and they wanted to know, they have business commercial property, and they wanted to use it for, to put some animals on, some sheep.
Page eight and nine.
So, page eight and nine, if you go down to business commercial and agricultural commercial, it says it's not permitted, agricultural personal says not permitted, but it says agricultural, but then you go to the next page, it says retail sales of produce grown on site is a permitted use. Well, how is that not agricultural? And farmer's market, which is also agricultural, is also a permitted use. So, it's a huge contradiction, because the first thing they said is, "Well, it's agricultural."
What are they trying to do?
They wanted to put some animals on the land.
To raise animals?
Raise animals. So, you know, their argument is, well, you know, it says no agriculture, but it says you can grow produce on the site and sell it on the site. You can have a farmer's market, which they can sell meat at a farmer's market, so how is this not a contradiction?
And you, and I would agree, that's, that is a conflict in the ordinance, and that's when the historian, what you do is circle those, make a note, and then when time for zoning changes, that's when, you know, you bring those to the board in, you know, your whole, you know, you'll have spreadsheet or a punch list of items that are like, "Hey, we need to change X, Y, and Z in the ordinance this year."
I think that might fall into the category too, where hooked in, hooked animals and foul.
Well, that's to do with shoreline, nothing to do with...
Well, the commercial property is kinda overlapping there, so that might be a reason to trigger it.
I don't see hooked, foul, hooked and foul having anything to do with commercial, I do with shoreline, it's the only place that's addressed anywhere and anything else.
But you may wanna note that as a conflict, and whether or not you wanna allow agriculture in that zone, or you don't, you know, make modifications.
So, that's something we may wanna be looking at.
All right, so, spreadsheet's a great idea if we have a work-in spreadsheet for stuff we wanna change, and I think we should go over a few of them right now, so you could do it. Do you do Excel at all?
Yes.
So, we can get a work-in spreadsheet going.
It can be just a Word doc, I mean, you could just handwritten one, or a Word document works, this is fine, but I mean, something that you can at least continue to track over the year, and you may not make it, make all the changes in one year because maybe there's more pressing things to do.
Well, there are some things that I think are more precedent than others.
A lot of times, you don't wanna have 30 zoning amendments at town meeting, because that's...
It's okay if you got 30 to take away. Okay? If you wanna add 30, you need to take away 30.
Well, actually, a lot of the ones we have are actually giving more freedoms to people, like the ADU one, we wanna change that, and talk about that this year again. But by giving more square footage, and maybe looking at detached in zones one and three, but not allowing detached in zone two. So, that was something that we've talked about bringing to the board to talk about.
So, it's a great idea. And what I don't want to happen is, in the past, that I think we've hung some building inspectors out to dry because they're not on the same page with us, and not, I think we weren't trying to do that, but when building inspector, you know, would push certain things, and people would think they're pushing a certain agenda for certain people, you know, those things...
Well, I have no agenda for any people.
That's why we should just try to make sure if you have something, you guys have something, let's get it on this...
Well, that's why we're throwing it out now, because it's gonna come forward.
Yeah, let's get it on this table, so we can decide together, that's all it is.
If it's something that this board would entertain, we'd be willing to work on that, but we wanna change, because right now, we're limited to 750 square feet. So, I'd like to see it, well, Victor and I would like to see it go from 750 to 900 square feet, which gives them a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, 'cause first, trying to build something at a...
Exactly, 750 square foot.
And Mike, if you've looked at the ADU, how do you read that?
I think I wrote it.
We're right at 750. Exactly, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could be less than 750. And this board is talking about, you know...
We wanted to give people a chance...
Minimum size of single-family homes, and you guys have grabbed them that much time.
We'd like to have them have two bedrooms, you know, give them a chance to get some more income, you know?
Yeah, but if they wanna only make it 700...
They can.
No, they can.
So, you wanna make it so they can do 700 to 900?
That's something we gotta address too.
You know, you just get it in there as seven fifty.
Potentially a range.
Let's go, exactly, yes, yes, and, and we'd like to be able to offer them to have a second bedroom too, as long as they get.
And give it a little buffer on size, so it could be smaller, but it could be bigger.
Right, exactly.
That's why we're saying, instead of limiting it to seven fifty.
This is something to hear from the people, you know, for extra income.
Because what happens is, the way the amendment is written for the ADUs, it says it will meet all other requirements of a single family unit. So a single family residence has an eight hundred square foot minimum, so therefore, what that triggers, the way we read that, is because the state has set seven fifty, we can do seven fifty, but we can't go below that, because we have to meet all the requirements as a single family residence.
Is that true for an ADU?
That's not true, only because the intent of that ordinance is not, is not to go back to a single family home that's only eight hundred square feet. That wasn't the intent.
This is to shall not exceed seven fifty, it's not requiring it to be seven fifty.
Or eight hundred, right? If it's already stated seven fifty, Russ, it can be six hundred or seven fifty.
And it does say that.
And just because that other ordinance is in there, and you find that line item in there, that's not true. Because the intent was not to stop ADUs, it was to make them at least seven fifty, or close to seven fifty.
Well, what I'd like to do is correct this, because.
That would be fine, but let's not stop them before we.
Well, they're going to go to zoning until this is changed.
What does it say there?
It says an accessory dwelling unit.
Why do you want to make it out of it?
Did I speak?
I don't know, can you?
I'd just like to give Mike's opinion on this.
For one accessory dwelling unit, she'll be allowed without additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single family dwelling unit, without an accessory dwelling unit, which I spoke to the attorney, and that triggers the table. So you can't go below the seven fifty, the state has allowed, said.
No, 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 so what this is saying is that.
This probably did the wrong attorney for one.
I don't know who you spoke to, but this, what this is saying is that you don't need additional land area, frontage, or basically, it doesn't, the lot doesn't need to be bigger, or have more frontage than what would be required for a single family home. Now, of course, in order to have an ADU, you must have an existing single family home on the property, which would presumably meet the minimum square footage of seven fifty, whatever that minimum is, we have now, eight hundred. So, so what that, that's all that that is saying, is that you don't need more frontage or land space.
So, so can we say that? Can we change it so it says that?
That's what it says.
That's what I want to have changed.
But, but right now, you don't need to send people to the zoning board for them to build one at seven hundred square feet.
Mike, is that true?
Well, it says it, right, I mean, it's, what, I'm reading it, and it's very clear to me that it says that, it says one dwelling unit, one ADU, shall be allowed without any additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitation, or other controls. I mean, so it's basically saying that you don't, you just don't need any bigger lot. That's all it says.
It doesn't say anything. He's talking about square footage. It's always talking about square footage. He's saying that him and the attorney have agreed that if it's not seven hundred and fifty square feet, they can't build it. And that's so not true. And that's so not true.
That's not what it says. It says.
And that you should have come to us with, not going to the attorney.
So section B just says.
So we could all be on the same page here.
All right, so we're going to be, we're going to be on the same page now.
So basically, you're telling people that they can put tiny holes in the tile away, as an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, and that was part of the goal of when the board modified this ordinance, and I don't remember when it was now, but, because I've been with this town for a long time, I was thinking.
It still requires them to have another structural property bigger than that.
Yeah, you have to have a bigger, you know, your main unit's got to be bigger. It's eight hundred, eight hundred square feet is your minimum, so presumably it's going to be bigger than eight hundred square feet.
But it doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to be, as long as you've got.
Well, no, it has to be at least eight hundred square feet.
That one, right, right.
Now, the primary structure has to be at least eight hundred square feet or bigger.
Right, but the ADU can also be bigger.
No.
The ADU can only be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Maximum.
Maximum.
Which we thought at the time, the planning board, that that was a reasonable size for an accessory dwelling unit, because you didn't want to be creating duplexes. You didn't want to be creating, you know, or, you know, yeah, I mean, it's, it's supposed to be accessory, it's supposed to be smaller than, it's supposed to not really make the house look any different than it does now. It's supposed to be attached to the dwelling, inside the dwelling, not detached. I don't, I mean, the idea of having a detached.
So it can be returned back to some, right.
I mean, the idea of having a detached accessory dwelling unit isn't a bad one, especially in those, in those zones that are five acre lots or three acre lots.
If it was a shed prior, it still needs to look like a shed.
Well, what we're looking is to keep them off the shorefront, because of the crowding of the shorefront. We, we don't want to have all that excessive loading yet into the septics. And, and most of the shorefront are very small time, very tiny lots, so allowing it in R one and R three.
Well, septic still has to be adequate to handle it.
Right, you've got to have.
So you can't, you can't pull one in without bringing the septic up to.
You've got to, you've got to have septic up to par, and that's in here somewhere.
But.
So that's not, that's not overloading anything.
And not only, I mean, and, and along the lakes.
Go ahead.
I mean, you may want to, you may want to modify your ordinances to require some additional protections along in the lakes, you know, some of these pre-treatment septic systems. If they want to add an ADU, and they limit it on space, I mean, those pre-treatment systems fit, you know, inside this table.
Bunk houses fall in the same category. You can put a bathroom in a bunk house.
They're not allowed. They're not allowed in that zone.
You're adding, I'm just saying, we're going to have to discuss it, but if you're adding a bunk house, you're adding bedrooms, you can put a bathroom in there, because you've got to make sure your septic's able to handle it.
Bathroom has nothing to do with septic load.
No, but the bunk house can be added. It's a bedroom, so you're adding bedrooms, so your septic has to be able to handle it. So what's the difference if you have ten bathrooms in a house, and it, it doesn't matter, because you're only using what you have for bedrooms. Everything moves off of bedrooms.
Well, people going under the clause that the state allowed, that they could have it inspected and put a plan in their file as an accepted plan. So now you've got a three-bedroom septic handling a five-bedroom, counting the ADU.
If they put an ADU, they have to prove that their septic's able to handle it.
Alls they need is a certificate from a sign, installer, a licensed installer or pump up.
And that's only in case that one fails.
That one fails, so you're setting yourself up for failure by allowing these in the shorefront, and when you start having multiple failures.
I can tell you that being close on the shore, that if my neighbor's septic's leaking, I know it's not going to be just us complaining about it.
Well, this, this, this ordinance though requires not just a permit on file, a permit for construction. It's not, it's not just an approval for construction of the septic, it's an approval for operation, so if they don't have adequate sewage capacity in their leach field.
Yeah, they don't just have one on file, they need to upgrade.
That's going to be a slot, right, because you're increasing the load.
I mean, in some cases.
Not just one on file, they need to upgrade their septic.
It needs to be adequate.
No, I know, if it's a three-bedroom septic, and they want to add an ADU or one bedroom, then they have to upgrade it.
And an AD, and an ADU is not a bedroom, it's a, another, it's another dwelling unit, which has more than one bedroom, you know, per day.
That's right, because you've got a kitchen, you've got a.
So, and it also says, this, this section, this ordinance does say that accessory dwellings are not limited to only one bedroom. Now, that doesn't read very clearly, but it does say you can have more than one bedroom. So, I know that was one thing you mentioned. So, I mean, seven fifty is tight, but, I mean, it's not, they're, again, they're not really, they weren't really designed to be for, you know, a family of seven.
Or an in-law apartment.
Yeah, it's.
That's how we got there.
It's kind of how we got there, it was, that's what they were always called, was in-law apartments, and now they're kind of open for, you can rent one out, you can have it as, you know, for when a company comes over, can be for your aging parent, or whatever. If, if you don't like seven fifty, you can change it to whatever you want, but it should be less than what would be required, the, the minimum requirement for a single family home.
Well, see, the, the problem with that, I don't think anybody, if they're going to build a new single family home, they're not going to build it eight hundred square feet.
We had that discussion as well, but I think you just bumped it up to eight hundred, I thought, or maybe you dropped it to eight, I can't remember.
No, well, one of our previous inspectors didn't want us to have a minimum square footage, but we kept it at where it was, and we think it was eight fifty, we may have lowered it to eight hundred or something.
We're going to start seeing things from the state on tiny homes, I think, in the next six, eight months, because there's all kinds of things before the legislature on tiny homes, which is going to be another hurdle in itself.
Well, it's going to be, be like a camper, right, but they're going to have to get a state-approved.
Oh, no, they're going to have to have everything, yeah, it's going to, but, you know, you're talking one hundred and thirty-five square foot homes.
Whether it's a, you know, yeah, but regardless, I mean, if they're using those as a primary structure, it's a primary structure. It has to meet everything they need.
Yeah, but wouldn't, wouldn't those fall under different regulations such as modular homes? We really, we don't really have a whole lot to say about modular homes.
We don't, but, you know, if you're going to take a, let's just say you want to live in your camper, and that you want to make that your primary structure, you've still got to make your septic your well.
And you can't live in a camper as a primary structure.
Yeah, it's still going to meet, it's still going to meet the whole expertise, you know, the whole criteria.
It's going to meet snow loads, it's going to meet insulation codes, energy codes, all the other codes.
Right, so that the tiny home thing is that what Russ talked about is the legislation that's kind of, is going through the state, they're trying to push it so you.
Have to allow them.
You have to allow them. Now, do we have to allow them?
In every zone.
If they don't meet the two hundred pound, or a ninety pound snow load, or the five pound snow load, do we have to allow them? If they don't meet that, or they got to build one, then.
Well, that's what I was saying about the modular, do they come with a regulation that.
Well, I don't know if they'll have that sticker that a modular or a mobile, the HUD, the HUD decal. Probably not, because most of the tiny home builders are independent builders.
Okay, so like a modular or a mobile home that's on a trailer, I mean, that's got everything, right?
We don't expect modular, mobile homes, other than anything that's built on site, because it has that sticker that basically tells us to stay out.
Yeah, because they never meet the, they never meet the stairs code.
No, they have thirty pound snow loads on them, and it's crazy, but because of the legislature, we're not allowed to, yeah. Only the foundation, anything that's added to the outside, anything that's added on site. And we get modulars that people will buy, and the second floor is unfinished, so they'll fit and get a permit to finish the second floor. We go to the second floor, the main floor that's finished. We really have no jurisdiction over it.
Okay, so back to the ADUs. Accessory dwelling units will not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet, but we can allow less without a variance?
Correct. Shall not exceed.
How low can we go?
Square foot, I guess.
So, and then more could be allowed with a variance as well?
Uh, yeah, if, if a variance were requested, they could have, they could, yeah, because this is just, it's not a conditional use permit requirement, so yeah, they could go for a variance to get.
Wasn't there a limit on the, from the state on that? I want to say six hundred rings of bell for some reason, or is that what we had before?
I thought it was four hundred.
No, seven fifty, seven fifty, that's a contradiction. The state, well, the state, I believe, shall not allow less than seven fifty, right, for an ADU?
I don't recall the specific square footage.
And we're saying it will not exceed.
Yeah, I think the state said less than seven fifty, and we said more than seven, more than seven.
Well, that's how the dilemma came about, that the state statute said it can't be less than seven.
That's what I, that's where this is coming from.
Our regulation said it couldn't be more than seven fifty, so it's exactly seven fifty, or don't build it. That was, that was how the whole issue.
That's where this came from.
Came from originally.
Well, that might, then you might need to modify, if the state says seven fifty, but I, I don't know if that's the case. I don't think they would have set that threshold, a minimum of seven fifty.
I don't remember if anybody actually looked at the statute.
It sounds, it sounds high to me, but if that's the case, then you do sort of have a conflict, because seven fifty max and min.
Trying to make something work, a good number.
Well, then I think we go to the intent, and the, and the intent is not to make it exactly seven fifty, it's anywhere from, you know, five fifty to seven fifty is the intent. I think of this planning board, we got it approved, and the time when they approved it, that was the intent. The intent sure wasn't, okay, it can only be seven hundred and fifty, and some people say, okay, that's how we're trying to stop people from having ADUs, because you have to make them seven hundred and fifty. That's not the case.
Well, this, this was modified before the statute.
Yes, yes.
This was all done before the state statute came into effect a couple of years ago. This, this was adopted.
It was, it was finalized a couple of months before the state did theirs, yes. Had final, it was the final draft, but it didn't go into effect, Michael, until like July, and we got this approved in March, but it was the same ordinance, basically, right? So I know we don't know how many applications come before you guys for ADU.
It's smaller than seven fifty, the state's consistent with your.
Yeah, the state says must not restrict the maximum size of the ADU to less than seven fifty, so if we're saying there has to be at least seven fifty.
No, we're saying it can't exceed seven fifty.
This is saying.
The only thing we're doing is wording it so that, the same thing, it's just a, yes, it's the same thing.
The state says fewer than two bedrooms, and smaller than seven fifty.
So that's where our seven fifty came.
And I don't have the ordinance in front of me, the statute, I have some, I don't, I'm on, I'm on AARP right now, so that's pretty.
Yeah, the statute changed like three times since it's came out too, so.
No, I get the same thing here, so, same wording.
But the board could, could put a minimum of like five fifty on.
They could, they could put a minimum.
Yeah, so, there's another one for detached dwelling units.
Because we have minimums in wealthy family, we have a single family.
And that's going to change.
So, so I think.
I think the idea of the minimum would be to keep yourself out of the tiny house.
No, the tiny house is going to fall into this category, because it says it has to be less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. There is no, I'm not seeing a minimum, or a.
But he's saying that we, maybe we might make, make a minimum, but if we make a minimum now, that tiny house thing wouldn't follow, would that be?
Well, right now, unless a tiny house was an ADU, detached ADU, is the only time this would come into play, because as per our zoning, we don't allow tiny houses, because we have eight hundred square foot minimum, as far as for primary residences, so they're not allowed. If people call, we have eight hundred square foot, which is what we have, so, but.
I'm actually seeing it can be no less than two hundred square feet.
It says that in it?
I'll let, that's an example. It's explaining it, but I'm not seeing the RSA that defines it yet.
Yeah, I'm on the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's website, it says seven fifty, municipality cannot require ADUs to be smaller than seven fifty. So you're, you're there, you've got seven fifty, and they can be smaller if they choose to have it smaller, but you're right at the threshold of what the state says.
So with our ordinances, we can allow less than seven fifty, just can't exceed seven fifty on ADU. Thank you, Mike.
And when you say seven fifty, is that, when you say ADU, is that living space and not the building itself?
Living space, yeah.
Because like you could have downstairs as a garage, so say, and that'd be wide open.
It's living space, yeah.
And you figure seven fifty, that's.
With the state, because this is showing me twenty to a thousand as an example.
Twenty, thirty by.
I don't care. Six, seven, four.
It's a good size.
It's a good size.
It's like basically twenty-four by thirty-two, something like that.
Yeah, it's a good size, that's way big enough for an ADU.
Let's see here.
And, you know, the, the state has a maximum of two bedrooms, and we have a minimum, we have, we say not limited to one.
Did I write this, or did someone, I can't even remember. I thought I wrote this, but I don't.
I think this was rewritten.
It was rewritten, because, because there's a lot of stuff in here that mirrors the actual statute, so, I think someone else maybe wrote this after.
It almost looks like somebody carbon copied it after, at some point when it was put it back in.
That's what was done, if I remember Nate saying that.
There's actually another, there's other.
Nate probably wrote it.
There is other RSAs now that actually state that when you change it, that the septic needs to be upgraded with it.
Yeah, because in the beginning, it came where it needed to be inspected, and you had to have one on file.
If, if they had a, they'd have to prove that their septic was able to accommodate that without doing more.
You don't have to have more than one septic, you can have, you can share.
They said share, right.
I think our old, um, cess, not accessory, but family.
In-law.
In-law, common, you could have one on file for us.
Right.
Well, when the ADU first came out, that's what they were requiring, just on file, but it seems like.
I think it's been evolving from the whole process of trying to clean the lakes up and everything, it's just we've been getting stricter and stricter as the time goes.
So if we just, just to kind of throw it out there, we'd have to change the ordinance, but just to throw it out there real quick, what Russ is asking too, is, you know, and we do this, we're pretty selective sometime on the, on the zoning. you know, and we do this, we're pretty selective sometime on the, on the zoning around the lake, our two, one acre around the lake, that we don't allow A D U's in that zone.
Well, detached, you can't start in a detached.
So only attached, you know, it's something that we can think about, cause I know, you know, I think, I think Russ is pretty adamant, you know, cause he sees these, he hears them.
I mean, I'll be okay with that, but I still think the bunkhouse should be put in to be allowed, because those, those are situations where people just come up on.
So, so I would say that's totally separate and we'll talk about that separately, but as far as A D U's in our two, like I'd be in, in favor of limiting it to just the, um, part of the, um, yeah.
Well, that's what it says, that's what the definition of what A D U is now, so.
But we're talking about, talking about doing some detached in the other zones.
So yes, you have to modify your definition, if you're gonna do that, right now they have to be in the dwelling, the main dwelling unit, have to be attached.
As far as bunkhouses, we'd have to write a whole zoning to include bunkhouses, and that would be a whole other amendment, so, we're just trying to clarify what we're working with cause these are allowed, but the detached now, but we have a call for them, but, you know, we.
All right, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, do we want Mike to write something up for the A D U's?
Sure.
Do we wanna, do we wanna do a pick, or how do we wanna, I mean, assuming that we get something, we're gonna be able to vote on it this fall, when they come out, late fall.
I think we should have Mike do it.
So my question is, do we wanna also look at maybe?
I think you're here for me.
I'm just, I didn't want to hold seven fifties, or where seven fifty in a two bedroom A D U can be tight.
Well, it's just tough for us to say that, and this is where we're at before, it's tough for us to say have a minimum of eight hundred and say that our A D U's can be eight fifty. It's just tough.
I, so I agree with that, but I don't think you'd wanna, I don't think you'd want the maximum more than the minimum of the primary one.
You could also think of what's the goal of the A D U, what's, I mean, I know what the state goal might be, what's, what was the local goal of it?
I think we should consider if someone's gonna put in a detached A D U.
People may have age in place.
Yeah, that's probably the more of the goal that there was, but maybe there was also maybe to have extra income, rental income.
Yeah, that's exactly.
It allows a lot of families where the parents, their children are older, they move, parents move into the A D U.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they allow to keep their, at least stay in their neighborhood.
So how much space do you really need?
I'm okay with it, I just.
I mean, I think seven fifty is more than adequate, but I'm not on the board.
So we ended up with seven fifty.
I'm okay with it, I was just trying to give a little bit more.
All right, so we wanted to stick with the A D U, right?
Yeah.
Do we want to draft something up that says?
Yeah, yeah.
With detached and attached.
Do we wanna word it so that if it's in a barn that's bigger, that the, so the living space for the A D U's, all it's just?
It is, it's just limited to a living space, so above the garage, you don't include the garage.
Just, just, just to the living space. You don't include it, if it's dead space behind it, we don't include it.
Right.
If you had a fifteen hundred square foot garage on the first floor with a full second floor, you could put a seven fifty A D U and still have storage and other things.
Right, that's why I just wanna make sure we don't consider that to be not, not okay, because it's too big.
No, 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 it's the living space that is the problem.
But I do think that, you know, some people might need a little bigger, they can go for a quick variance, and we'd probably give them a variance or a hundred foot, square foot bigger because, you know, their mom and dad want a bigger living room.
Do we wanna word that, that we can bump it a hundred?
No, it's just anything, if they came in and asked, we just, that's what we just, tell them to apply for it, we deny it and send them to zone.
And then you get to look at the conditions, specific conditions on that site.
Then you can make a sensible judgment.
And some sites are gonna be, that's fine, and others are gonna be, no, the site's too tight.
Yeah.
Everything's different, every site is different.
Right, well, I'll throw, I'll throw the curve ball in now for you, cause I know you like this stuff.
You like sliders.
So you get a twelve hundred square foot house, you wanna put an A D U in, but they're gonna put it inside the house.
We're gonna need to build an addition.
Now they're gonna build more house, cause they won't be meeting the eight hundred.
No, maybe one of the rooms goes in the cor, in the basement.
Well, but you.
Finished basement, sure.
So how big of a house was it?
Twelve.
So they could, they could.
In theory, do four.
In theory, they could do four and still have the eight, although put an addition on those.
Four room in the basement, possibly, or over the garage.
But there are people that are building additions for A D U's, so.
See, a slider just got hit under the pan.
Just making sure everyone's just thinking about it, yeah, it's a curve ball, I can't throw that much joke.
Curve ball.
A curve ball.
Okay, that's good.
I'll take it you have these notes so we can do what they said.
Where else we going? Sure.
Can I read those guys?
No, yeah, type them up.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, what page, okay, guys, break it up.
That's it.
Okay.
In our zoning ordinances, on page two, table two, minimum setbacks, page two.
Page two.
Page eleven, excuse me, table two, minimum setbacks. If you look under shoreline to shorefront, and you go down to shoreline for setback, thirty with a footnote of seven. Okay, so what I wanna talk about is accessory.
Boathouses, docks.
Structures. So I was told that, okay, with the footnote seven, we revert back to the state, which the state setback is fifty.
No, no, I'm saying the state has to approve a boathouse if they wanna put one in.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm trying to address is what do we have an ordinance that addresses accessory structures within the shoreline?
You do.
In other words, the state setback is twenty feet, it can be twenty feet for a shed, a gazebo, screen house, you know? We don't, I don't see anything in here that addresses accessory setbacks, so, we had a meeting and Brian Berlin came in and said that the thirty, the reason the thirty was left in was for the setbacks on the waterfronts, is that true? I mean, the way you look at that.
Well, you emailed me this question, and I, I think my answer to you was that yours is thirty regardless of what it is, the structure is a thirty foot setback.
What is?
The state might have something less than that, but yours is more restricted.
But the house is fifty.
The house is fifty, the primary structure.
Primary structure, see, I assumed these were all setbacks for a primary structure.
Well, the primary structure doesn't even necessarily mean a house.
But we don't address.
So, I'm just trying to address, cause this is what I come to all the time, is the state allows accessory structures twenty feet.
I mean, if they pull a camper.
Do we go back to fifty, or do we go to thirty?
Like a shed.
Right, a shed is an accessory, but if it's got a, if it's got a bathroom, if it's got a kitchen.
Right, but if you see the seven. You go back to the shoreline protection, that's a fifty feet.
And it's being used as a primary structure, then that's a, that's gotta be fifty.
Except for.
Get past that.
Requires a shoreline setback of fifty feet, this setback supersedes the town of Wakefield.
That's true, but I think what, I think what, there's two things going on.
The intent of that being put in there, the intent, that's why it's in parentheses.
It's the grandfather.
No, the intent why that was put in there is so people knew that the state was a fifty foot setback for a primary structure. It wasn't to take away any other rights, that's the only reason why that was put in there, to let people know that we're thirty,
So I just wanna.
But the state's gonna require you, if you're building a new house, the state's gonna require you to be fifty.
But you, but, but now for, I think what, and I remember being that in that discussion.
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
No, because that don't make any sense.
No.
Why, why does, yeah, but listen.
Listen, I was here at the time, I could tie it up and put it in.
But listen, if, if the state's requiring that you do fifty, then why are we at thirty?
That's what we've been saying for years.
Because, because, I remember the discussion was that the planning board at the time, and the town of course voted for it, wanted everyone to know that we think fifty may be too much.
Yeah, but you still can't do it, if thirty, you have to do fifty.
But you can do less than fifty if it's not a primary structure.
But it doesn't say.
I see.
Might have, yeah.
This is where we want this spelled out.
And if it's already there, and if it's already there, you can still.
Well, pre-existing does nothing to do with setback.
No, you could say it does, look at it, says it right here, it says it right here, you could do it, you can do it.
This is the biggest, and people think it's wrong.
Use the things to stop people instead of helping people, it ticks me off.
What we're trying to do is clarify.
Cause I can tell you, it's a hundred and some pages here, and we can stop people from doing anything, cause we can really tear it apart and stop people, or we can help them, if, we can help them with the intent of what this ordinance was, and I can tell you, there was, we discussed it for years, for like a full year about this thirty to fifty thing, and the thirty stayed, it stayed by vote, we had this whole, whole friggin' place here full, I think we even had it upstairs, and we debated this thirty to fifty for months, and we decided to leave it in with this footnote to tell people that if you're building a new structure, fifty feet is the state rule, so don't plan on doing it at thirty, cause it's in our zoning. The thirty is in our zoning because of all the structures we have out there that are thirty feet, and we don't want people to interpret it if they tear down their house, that they can't use that same footprint, we don't want them to use it that way, we want them to use it.
So are we in agreement that we're at fifty feet?
For primary.
Well, no, no, you're at thirty, you're at thirty feet.
The new construction.
The state can still give you a waiver to that fifty foot requirement if you can prove that there's a hardship as well, but you can go through the process.
Without that though, we're at fifty feet.
Without that, you're, you're, if they say fifty, then you can't trump the state.
And the fifty's for the primary structure.
How about still getting back to the accessory structure?
Accessory, you're fucking.
They're thirty.
Who's thirty?
The state's at twenty five.
I was only saying that we can permit it for thirty feet.
No, just an exception.
Just a shed.
You can do any structure at thirty, as long as the state says you can.
As long as the state.
Yeah, but we're not talking about the state, we're talking about the town, so, well, the state, they'd have to get a variance from the state, a waiver.
They get a waiver from the state, then, then they don't need a wa, a variance from the town, because it's already less than go to thirty.
From their shoreline permit.
From primary.
And if they want to go to twenty, which would meet the state requirement for a shed, they couldn't do that without a variance.
Correct.
Correct, because we are more stringent than the state, whether it can be.
And that came, that came up.
To go to the twenty.
Well, that, well, that, that came up, and the zoning board actually denied a variance, this is about two or three years ago, based on the fact that they, they felt twenty feet was too close to the water, even though that's what the state allowed, and they stuck with the thirty feet and denied the variance. So that's actually happened, and it was, it was a shed, um, that was built too close to the water without any permits, and then came in for permits and found that it was, I think it met the twenty feet, but it didn't make it meet the thirty feet, and they actually moved it back.
Seven hundred and fifty feet.
The thirty feet.
Seven hundred and fifty square feet.
So the question is, do we wanna change it to twenty or just leave it at thirty? Well, thirty would be for sheds and other small structures that the state allows within that fifty feet.
Does the state define what?
Here's another thing, yeah.
Does the state define?
All right, so this is my concern, is we're talking sheds, we're talking gazebos, anybody that owns waterfront, you wanna be able to enjoy your waterfront. I mean, right now you can't do much other than a six foot wide path to a dock, so this would allow people, if you get some boats or something, you can store your stuff in there, you don't have to walk all the way back up, so I mean, I think we could, we're actually devalue, devaluizing these properties if we don't let them have that setback.
Down to twenty.
You know, you should be able to sit out by the water, enjoy your waterfront, that's why you buy the house.
You can't walk another ten feet, thirty feet.
Well, I don't know.
Versus twenty feet.
I think that really depends on the property though, because some of these properties are, are billy goat properties, and that twenty foot is probably the only way you can do it.
Right, right. No, but I mean, it's a case of, you're sitting by the water, you wanna sit on a little deck, you know, or in a screen house and not have the bugs, but down by the water.
Right, but.
I don't see how that's affecting the water, I mean, we require drip line trenches for all structures within five hundred feet.
I don't disagree, I mean, most of the places on the lakes are well within that twenty feet.
And it's kinda hard when you look around the lake and everybody else has, you know, cleared lots, sand in the water, sheds right on the water, some houses are even built right onto the water. So I, I just, I understand we wanna protect the lakes, believe me, nobody wants to protect them more than me, but I don't think, I would like the possibility of giving it to the people, the state allows.
But I think we need to also look at, as Silcox was saying, bunkhouses, now you start putting bunkhouses there with bathrooms.
This is, this doesn't fall under a bunkhouse, we're talking strictly shed.
But a bunkhouse would be an accessory structure, so if you say accessory structures, now you're allowing bunkhouses.
We don't allow bunkhouses, it's not in the ordinance.
I know, but if they get a variance for the accessory structure, now you put an accessory structures with bathrooms.
Like, like we just said, you look around the lake, there's already things built, so we gotta find that balance to really, okay, what do we, what direction do we wanna go?
You know, I put more septic loading within, which really shouldn't be fifty feet from the lake, anything with a septic, without permission from the state.
How, how does?
This would be nothing with the septic.
How does the state define their, after, like, what they allow within twenty feet? How do they define?
I don't know the answer.
It's a small percentage of the property that they allow structures.
So, how big can these structures do?
They have a twenty foot, they have a fifty foot setback for primary structure, but they have a twenty foot setback for accessory, what is that considered, just sheds?
Okay, so.
Deck, docks, patios.
What's it?
Screen houses, gazebos, uh, just a structure that's.
Yeah, so if we could define it the same as the state, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't have a problem.
Well, I think we should mention though, nothing with maybe, without the septic, no bunkhouses.
Bunkhouses, yeah, no bedrooms, we're talking, we're talking a shed.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, is to eliminate the possibility of somebody saying, oh, now I'm twenty feet, I'm gonna put a bunkhouse in, a bathroom, and now that's within twenty feet of the shoreline, so I think.
Well, the bathroom's got nothing to do with that, cause that's gotta get pumped into the septic, it's gotta be approved, I mean, the bathroom's not gonna dump a pipe into the water, it's just not gonna happen, so whether there's a bathroom there or not, that's really irrelevant, cause that's going into the septic system, that has to be state approved.
Well, on, on another note, in speaking to the state, so, what, what the state's gonna be introducing next year is allowing people to put these structures, to put decking. What they, what's going on now is people are doing perch beaches.
Right.
Because that's the only thing you can do in order to sit down by the water, if you build a new house today. So what they wanna do is give people the right to have, put down a little patio or some decking or something that you could sit on, instead of sitting, you know, in the bushes, exactly, in the blueberry bushes.
It's almost like, it'll be a dock, almost like a dock in the front.
They're gonna allow, yep, along the water.
Right along the water's edge, you'll be able to build, you know, within limitations of size, but seating area for the people that, you know, have no sand and they're sitting in the bushes, and so now they'll be able to build that dock that goes along the waterfront, so you can put your chairs, your kids can jump off and go swimming.
Do they have a minimum requirement or a, or a maximum requirement?
Well, they're gonna have requirements, we haven't seen the law yet, but it's preliminary, but it's coming out for next year.
It's preliminary right now. You know, post, and they, they think, they look in that, that that's actually better for the environment, cause a perch beach, you're wiping all the vegetation out, probably taking some trees down and dumping all that sand, you know, everybody's picking the weeds out, so that, but if you get decking, you know, you still get off of the deck, you'd still have your vegetation growing and, you know, around your pathways, so it's actually a little bit better, so, I mean, that's the only reason I wanted to bring that up.
So, you might have more, and we might have some more discussion, but I think after this meeting, if we could just get Victor, you know, to do a little list, and maybe we can take one at a time that you can do with Russ and you guys, you, Russ and Mike can maybe take a stab at it.
Sure.
And then we can bring them in one at a time to us, but let's get a little list going and bring one in at a time.
I like that idea, yep.
And then we can discuss it, we can finalize it, and then we can hold it until we have our public carries.
I'm adding to this, add to list, add to list, add to list, so I can make that list and give it to Victor.
And so one of the things I even talked about a few meetings ago is, in the last, um, warrant article, whether the town go, some of the things that we put forth, we weren't all on the same page, and although, and it wasn't stated in the, like, on the town warrant, where the board stood on an item or not, and most of what we put forward did not get voted in, so me personally.
If you didn't endorse it, it wasn't endorsed by the board.
Right, what I would like to see is whatever we put forward, if at all possible, that we all unanimously agree that, and we may have to, you know, bend a little bit as an individual, but we all hopefully can say, yep, we all stand behind this change that goes on the warrant, and that we can put something on the warrant that says, you know, the board five to zero endorses this, that's what I'd like to see.
So you, you wanna make it anonymous, unanimous across the board, or you wanna have some regard?
I would like to have something that we can all agree with, right?
I think it should, I think it should go through with all of us.
I think, yeah, I think we should come to an agreements on it, if we're gonna push it in town.
I, that's what I'd like to see, is that gonna happen with every single one, maybe not, right?
Michael, whatever you've seen in other towns, I know like we do, we're at a budget committee, our budget committee puts, okay, nine to zero or seven to two.
I don't think there's any restrictions on putting some language at the end of the warrant article that says that the planning board supports this four to one or five to zero, or whatever it might be, I know with the citizen's petitions, you have to have a statement afterwards that says the planning board either endorses it or doesn't. The other ones that you advance are, we presume that they're from the planning board, so everyone should know, these are planning board initiatives.
I think the biggest trouble we saw with that last vote though was Facebook, people saw one word and misconstrued it and blew it up as if it was something it completely was not.
Plus we didn't go to the public, the town administrator handled the ordinances to the public, and we should've addressed that.
Yeah, it's total fake now, right. Right.
It should've been addressed by somebody from the board to explain, you know, maybe more than once too, and to get the word out to the public. It should have been addressed by somebody from the board to explain, you know, maybe more than once too, and to get the word out to the public.
Because it was, you know, just looking at, every day we go on Facebook on the pages and you're looking at what's going on and everything's getting twisted and controlled and.
I agree.
But I think this is, this is a great step though.
We should be in the night and we're going to push it to the town.
We're talking with you, our expert, about plans, you know, about changes that we're going to put forward and potentially put forth next month.
Really, we want to have a lot of these things here in the next few months too, so we have plenty of time.
And make some educated decisions, right?
And have.
Right.
Not rushing, right?
Well, this is why we're trying to get things started in June this year instead of September.
I think it's great.
So can we decide though as a board to put that in there after our, that the planning board either voted it three to two or we want it unanimous or we just want to, I mean, we can write in it that this is supported by the.
Well, it says it in the very beginning of, of the annual report or the warrant, it says the following amendments were passed proposed by the planning board.
It just, it doesn't always say, I think we're allowed to, but we've never.
I think there was a law that was passed last year that was allowing that and then they were allowing.
At the end to just say.
We all, we're all going to work together on it, we're going to come to a decision, but we don't put it forward. You know what I'm saying?
Well, maybe that's the goal. Maybe that's the goal that we can.
It's a great goal.
Right?
At least have it four to one.
It's actually kind of nice to have people's varying opinions on a plan.
No, that's fine. I'm not suggesting that something.
No, but I agree with you that the goal ought to be, let's try to read the whole planning board.
Let's each play devil's advocate with our own agenda.
It would be great to have agreement on all the warrant articles because then that shows the town that you all agree on.
That doesn't mean we can't put ones on that we don't agree on.
Yeah, right.
All you need is three votes and it goes on the ballot.
Yeah.
All right, any others that pop out at us?
Well, I hate to go back to this one, but I just wanted, I wanted to get clarification from Mike on private campsites.
I knew you were going there.
Well, I just, this was another one that got away from us.
Private camp sites.
No, that's good one.
Yep. That's every year we do.
Article sixteen, page?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, thank you Russ.
Wouldn't be right if we didn't do it, it says forty-four.
And I mean, we did, I, I did get clarification from Attorney Sager and also the planning board, but if you look at, all right, where is it?
Forty.
Thirty.
Can we go with what the issue is?
Forty-three.
Forty-four, perfect.
Page forty-three.
Private camp sites.
It's always a different issue.
All right, so Article sixteen, private campsites, section B limitations, and if you go down to number one, one private campsite per lot is allowed for a period no longer than a hundred and twenty days consecutive. I've had people come in to me and say, the way I read this ordinance, I can have my camper for a hundred and twenty days, close it down, disconnect it, have it road ready for one day and come back and set it up for another consecutive.
This is exactly, this is a conversation we had like four, five years ago, didn't we?
But the, but the. The spirit is the spirit of the ordinance, one year, a hundred and twenty days in one year and you're done, in a calendar year.
Yeah, that's the intent. That was our intent.
That's what we're doing.
This was, this was, this was a previous building inspector tried to get this changed a long time ago and it never went anywhere.
Couple times?
Couple times.
Well, I just, we'd like it to be clear so that the, you know, the public looks at it and says, okay, I can do this or I can't. That's sometimes how we have problems with enforcement, because if we have issues trying to, you know, determine what it says, then residents are going to.
So do we need to put an average in there?
Well, I, I, for enforcement.
In any calendar year, do we need to add that? Make it clear.
I think we could try and probably get voted against.
Probably get voted down again, we try.
As long as we know what the spirit is and what we can enforce, that's all I want clarification.
Well, all I can tell you is what I'm reading and I, I would agree with what you said originally, which is they can just pull out and come back in the next day, so.
But that wasn't the intent.
I just read, I, you know, I like to read, I like the black and white stuff. When it's black and white, it's hard to make it gray. So, I mean, you can change it. That's what I always tell towns, is change it if it doesn't work.
Maybe we need to change it. I mean, we tried to change a lot of, a lot of things there.
We tried to add a permit to it too and, and I mean, that's probably what shot it down right there.
Well, people don't want to spend any more money. I mean, it's, everything's gone up so much.
Oh, no, I agree.
But I mean, you can.
But I mean, you can understand from enforcement point of view, how do you enforce that? How do you know when someone's been there? How long have they been there?
That's exactly what the issue was then.
Yeah.
So the issue is now coming away.
Maybe we should just turn the other way.
But you, you know, you can look at some of the other sections of this ordinance and, and say, like, number three, no campsite shall be, you know, used
Right, we're definitely enforcing that, because that's life safety issue.
It's nice that you disconnected and then reconnected the next day, but your, your intent and what you're doing is you're staying here, you're around it, so.
Right.
So we put this article in fifteen years ago and it's been nothing but a nightmare since then and we said at the time it was going to be a nightmare. And I've been thinking about it a lot over the last ten years since everybody's trying to get campers out or get campers in or want their campers on their lots, all those things. And I just, I visualize, I ride by campers, but I've seen it evolve, like, if somebody's using their lot as a camper, it doesn't stay there very long. It may stay there five years and then the camper's either junk if they don't do anything with it or they're upgrading it to something else. And then I've seen it, maybe in a year later, they're putting in a foundation and they're starting to build their camp fund. You know, they like the spot or if they don't like the spot, they move out and they go buy another lot on another lake or they do something different or they're, they've moved on, whether they're, they're done with the camping thing, you know, and it seems to go away.
The, the point.
My, my point is time kind of seems to heal, most things, time heals it.
The whole point of putting this in, I believe, was because we had campers that were being used for year round as a permanent residence and that was, the point was to get away from that.
And it was, no, the biggest thing was people were putting more than one camper on their lot and having family come up with five campers and they were having a grand old time every weekend, which.
I, I do recall.
I like people having fun, but I know sometimes the neighbors can't handle people potty every single weekend with five families. So I understand, but I think we did put it in place because of a few, you know, situations out there that we couldn't control without an ordinance. So I'm just saying, my only point is, is that it's so tough to manage and I think it, they go away, the situations go away. We get one at Blue Lake that those people are getting closer, they took care of their camper and spot for a couple of years, really nice and now they're getting closer, they're about ready to build a house and we're giving them a hard time about a camper, you know, and, and they're going to do it. And, and, you know, some people are nice about it. And then there's some people that, you know, come in to see Russ and Victor and they're like, what the heck are you doing to me? You know, and if they were just nice about it and they're building a house in a year, you know, it might not be a bad thing. But they say, what the heck are you guys trying to do now? You know, so it's tough. I understand your job's tough and I understand this zoning thing is tough, but if we could just ease our way through some of these situations, I think it's easier on everybody, because I really think time heals most things. And whether we needed this ordinance to stop that one house from having five campers, maybe we did. And that was the biggest reason why we put it in.
Right.
There was a couple of those things happening out there that people were having campgrounds, basically. You know, they were having all their friends come over with their campers and all this was fun, right? But it was only fun for a couple of years, because then they started fighting with each other or they wanted to have their own place or.
What's the biggest problem with this ordinance now for sites that we have? Is it the fact that they're trying to do this or are they trying to do something different?
Well, it's not really, you know, with the people, it's just me trying to, what am I supposed to do with this? If I get the impression of the board, which I have no problem with, yes, we don't want someone living out of a camper year round because they're, they're avoiding taxes, number one, but number two, most of, or I should say number one, most importantly, is the life safety.
Right.
These, these, they are not made for New England weathers, they, they don't stand the snow load, so that is at my main concern.
May have people drop their points.
So I mean, if, if I'm getting the impression of the board here, let's not worry about the campers unless somebody is living in it year round or unless they have more than one camper on the lot. Other than that, leave them alone. Right? Is that what you just said?
That's kind of my opinion. It's just my opinion and I think it's.
And, and the next ordinance that looks next.
I mean, I think, as long as, I, I don't have an issue as long as, you know, when they're putting them, like, there, I know there was another lot in Canal Road that was an issue because of the septic not being there or something like that. That was, I remember Nancy complaining about that one.
They're driving points into the ground and not picking up septic.
There's stuff like that. That's the stuff that's really the problem, is when they're putting them on small lots that aren't really adequate for having a, you know, you're trying to get away from having a primary structure because you can't. So I think that's the biggest problem we have, is when you put the trailer on a property that can't accommodate a primary structure, but you use it such as well.
There's one more to add to this too, just to go defend the other side. And we've had people in, that have come in for tax, what's it called?
Tax abatements.
Tax abatement, because they live next door. And we've done a few of these and we've dealt with quite a few that had two or three campers on the lot, so. The next door neighbor actually ended up getting tax abated because the guy had three campers.
Because of transit on campus.
I mean, now he's down to just one, he's back in compliance. But I mean, that's, that's the other side you got to kind of look at too, is we get a look, we have gotten complaints. Jeez, I got a beautiful house.
Absolutely.
The next door neighbors.
The property, we've been down because it's three campers?
Trying to sell it and people come over there and they look over and there's a campground set up next door. I'm not going to bother them.
We have recreational campgrounds in town, you know, so that's where they belong. More than three? Well, recreation, more than one, yeah. I mean, you know, you can have one set up on your land, you can have another camper, but it has to be road ready and it could be on your property, that's fine.
And then on, it's road ready Monday through Friday when Victor and I are working and then on Saturday and Sunday, there's people living in there.
But it's broken down and then during the week, so what's the big deal? I don't.
Well, it devalues the neighbor's property, is the neighbor's complaint.
So the issue that keeps coming up is the hundred and twenty days. That's a thing we keep changing every year we discuss. So if, the feeling at this point is that what we're trying to prevent is year round permanent resident.
Which we have several.
And septic.
In campus.
And water and septic. But it requires all of those things. It says if you're going to have it there, you've got to, you've got to meet those.
But they come in and drop it in anyway and they just basically tell us where to go and they don't care what we do, what letters we send. They don't, they don't care. They just ignore everything we say. They ignore things from the state. We have an ongoing, a couple of ongoing cases.
But they're going to do that, whether or not we got one twenty days in here or we don't have one twenty days, right?
But at least we have, we have an enforcement mechanism that when we take them to court, we have something that we can stand behind. Without that, we have nothing.
Without the one twenty days.
Without any of it, you know, you need something.
I'm not, I'm not saying to change this, I'm saying that if a one twenty days is impossible for enforcement purposes, it already says that you can't make us a permanent resident.
But they do anything.
Okay, but, but so that then when you take them to court.
Only here three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year, so that's not perfect.
About three sixty-five.
Still the primary.
Well, that's, you know.
I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping the ordinance.
We'll hear it.
Oh, we'll hear it.
But, you know, I know it's tough for these guys, but I think we just try to change the one simple thing to try to make sure that people understand that the consecutive days means you've got to be there for three months, four months, that's it. You know, then you shut it down. And we don't try to change everything in it, we try to just try to.
Change the one thing.
Right.
So this just says, this says a hundred and twenty days consecutive, so it doesn't talk about annually. We want to just change.
So here's, here's my problem with this, is if you do one twenty, that's, that's four months, right? That's, that's May, June, July and August. The kids are still on vacation, so you still got, and, and summer doesn't even start anymore until July, so.
Kids don't get out of school in June.
To, to the end of June, so how do you, how do you, how do you set that four months? I mean, I would, I mean, personally, I would want my camper set up until you get cold.
October.
Well, see, if you're choosing four months, we're not going to stay, we're not going to stay, you got to be there from May to September, we're going to say.
But you got, most, most people come, it's Memorial, and I say May, I say the twenty-fifth. So go from the twenty-fifth, so you got June, July, August, September. That's pretty close, I mean, in honesty, but now summer does not get here until July half the time anymore and it goes to November. So I guess like you said, you get to pick the, but I don't know, for a hundred and twenty is enough.
I'm in favor of increasing it to a hundred and sixty days.
Yeah, see, I would be. Okay, I can, one more to throw in the loop. Not a problem with that, but here's the other one that I see happen a lot. I see people that enjoy coming up in the spring, the summer, in the fall, in the winter, just a weekend. And a lot of people, they come up for snow, they have four weeks.
So our permits actually show.
You're taking that away from them by saying a hundred, you know, now you got to either pick, do you want to come up in the winter or in the summer?
Why don't we make our permits?
We don't want them in a camper in the winter.
Yeah.
No, you don't want them living there because it's not, doesn't meet the snow loads.
But we can still make a permit so that they're, let's just say we break it up into blocks and if they're not going to be coming up for this time period, they can break those off so that they're permitted to use it.
Throw that permit word in there and the whole thing's going to get shut down again. Even if it's, you said free permit, it'll never make it through time.
Well, and following people around, because, well, I was only here for three weeks.
Yeah, how do you enforce it?
Yeah.
You can't, you can't.
You got to have some, I mean, we can at least drive by, see that a camp has been opened up, make a note, okay, it's open. If we drive by four and a half months from now and it's still open, we can send a letter and say, okay, this is a hundred and twenty days. It's the only enforcement mechanism we have right now, but at least we have something. If we start saying, you can have thirty days in December, sixty days in the summer and in the fall, you can have another thirty days. There's no enforcement mechanism that's going to come into play there.
Yeah, I just think the seasons are getting, they're not, they're not starting like they used to. And, and having it not, being able to use it from Memorial Day always sets, sets the pace. Even like this Memorial Day, it was cold for everybody, so, but it still set the pace.
Everybody comes up, opens up.
Now everybody goes home for a couple more weeks, the schools out and then they start again on the twenty-fourth. Usually around June twenty-first or twenty-fourth is when schools shut down. So I think you lose that month, so that hundred and twenty days to me is, is short term. But, and again, I don't want people living in them by all means, but.
Because I recall the discussion year after year after year that we've had this, the one twenty wasn't a magic number. We needed a number.
Yeah.
Well, what's reasonable? Well, one twenty, let's go with one twenty.
Now that you've figured out, maybe it is a month, maybe adding.
Always increase that to one fifty, that's five months.
One fifty, one sixty, I think the not, the thing to do though is to keep it well under half the year, that way they can't say it is their primary.
Because that, it keeps them, they can't claim later, say after six months.
And with the rest of the requirements, you, you can enforce, you can enforce things that are, you know.
Late, obvious.
Late, late, right. Somebody is, you know, a, a two days over the one, whatever, you know.
Yeah, but that's not the damn looking out.
We're looking at people that are there for nine months.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, these people, you know, and then they're, they're living there all week.
They're snowblowing it, they're shoveling the roof.
The intent was the limited. May to September?
Certain times of the year. I agree. I think that.
It might be better just to put a timeframe in there.
Just May to September. Don't have a camper opening up.
Same as a campground, the campgrounds do the same thing, they only open up a certain period.
Yeah, May to the end of, yeah.
Columbus Day weekend.
The end of September. It's October, yeah.
What, October fifth?
Well, Memorial Day to Columbus Day, happy day, Memorial Day to Columbus Day.
Yes.
That's right.
Season. I know, it's, it's no easy thing. That's why this ordinance in my mind ought to go away. But just as my opinion.
No permanent and no more than one being used on a lot.
Yeah. And we could change, change our simple things.
Or if we get a complaint from the next door neighbor, then we have to address it. That's how I, I use your own judgment and.
What else?
It's open.
Um. So this is an open discussion. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to what we were, we were doing. I know we can't talk any specific things as far as what you may have before the board, right? Okay, but go ahead.
One, state always overrides town, correct?
No.
When does that change?
We can be more restrictive.
The restrictive one, the more restrictive one usually applies, but I'm sure there are exceptions to that.
So if the state's stricter, you have to follow the state over on county policy, correct?
Unless we're stricter.
If we're stricter.
Okay, so then the other thing. Okay, so then the other thing is, um, I know that, uh, Paul and Charlie, you're trying to, you're, you're kind of on the same line as me with least restrictive to people, which I appreciate. But one of the things I've had a real big issue with the planning board with is inconsistency. So when you're mentioning the thirteen requirements for the insignificant change, you're saying allowances. I think we should stick with a solid plan. So the people like me and other people in town that are having an issue with planning board know exactly what you're expecting from us. We can look at a piece of paper and say, this is what they expect. This does not pass. We need to get this fixed before we have to confront either Vic or Russ on it. Um, because it gets so confusing when there's variances that are so easily changed from person to person that it would be a lot more easy for us. It's a solid.
I would, I would keep the person to person thing out of it. It's more site to site.
Yeah, but still.
Property to property.
Yeah.
But, you know, we gotta, we gotta look at it and we gotta make a judgment call on, on those thirteen things. And we, we either have to vote for it or they gotta feel as though it's what they're feeling is, is accurate.
Should be thirteen requirements if they don't pass any from the planning board because that way.
It is that.
Can be discussed by people that the people of the town have elected to do that job. It's kind of what I'm getting at.
True, and that is the way it is.
Yeah.
That is the way it is.
Um, and better definition of the accessory units that, I, I kinda understand what Vic's going with, with the shoreline stuff. But, uh, and, and I wouldn't want bunkers on the shorelines either, uh, the bunker houses, but maybe getting a more of a definition.
I think, yeah, bunkers, there's no one, right? They could take the bunk beds right out there and put them on the dock.
I mean, cause even if you did.
We'd be doing it as kids, right? Were we young, we could do that.
And then we'd still be stuck with them taking washwater into the, into the lakes as well. So I think there needs to be some kind of definition maybe of what we're gonna allow next to the water. Cause I wouldn't want the, I don't want the water polluted anymore than anybody else. And I'm thinking if you don't make a better definition, we're gonna get people having what the shower, you know what I'm talking about. On the beaches and some of the main areas, they have these outdoor showers where you can wash off. I don't think you want that next to the lakes either. So I think we have to be very careful in definition of what we're putting for accessories near the water. I think that needs to be very careful.
You'd be, what was the difference?
Yeah, but this is the part, this is the next part I'm coming to. People have to make choices on their own. And it's not the town hall's responsibility to make safety choices for people. Like if a person's gonna pee in water, I mean, that's on them. I mean, the town shouldn't be patrolling who's that part. I mean, people need to be somewhat responsible. And like with the campers in the wintertime, I don't think you should, as a board, should be addressing that. It should be the choice of the person that owns the property if they wanna endanger their lives or not.
But we have to enforce it if it's in our zoning.
But to be, with that being said, I kind of, I know, I gave a lot of discussion with the people that were unhappy with the pol, the warrant that you guys wanted and that got voted down. And it was, one, it was the permit. People are saying the permits are outrageous right now in town and they don't wanna pay any more permits, period. Um, two is the consecutive, because some people want the Memorial Day weekend, some people want the Columbus Day weekend. So maybe the Memorial to Columbus Day would be more what people would vote for. Cause I voted it down and I don't even have anything like that that I'm concerned about, but I know that I would vote for it if it was like that. And then people can have their campers for the entire summer, enjoy the holidays. There's some people that are just weekend warriors that are here only on the weekends. And that one twenty, cause they don't get to use their campers. And I also, I believe that we need the, um, ordinance because I still have two campers across the street from me that are, the, the property isn't big enough to hold those two campers, but they're still there and they're still being used. So I need a one lot, two campers.
Okay, you got anything else? So we are gonna have plenty of opportunity, I think, to talk about the campers. Uh, we're gonna, as we discussed earlier, we're gonna have that on the agenda to hopefully be able to put something before the, the townspeople again in March. Um, so we'll get plenty of time to see the, uh, further discussion and further, um.
I also have one more thing that I forgot.
Yeah, and I'll let you do the, say that, but further, further discussion and there'll be public hearings on it. So we're gonna have plenty of opportunity. But did you have anything different? You got something else?
Yeah, well, I had a question about raised vegetable beds that had been brought up on Facebook. Um, and I'm, I'm bringing it up because there are, it heated up a lot of people and I don't know, I don't believe it's correct, but I wanted to get it from.
Well, you take that belief and you carry it because it's, it's hogwash.
Okay, cause I was, I'm doing.
Okay, so nobody knows anything. They're just going rampant with that, that social media. And that's what happens is they only know one side because you're hearing one side.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
We, we don't get on that because it causes issues.
I'm asking because I'm putting my vegetables in raised.
Well, you don't have to worry about it.
Permit to feed myself.
Well, the whole time a raised bed was becoming an issue if it was put within twenty feet of the shore.
That's the problem.
That's all I need to know. So you.
Hundreds and hundreds of.
This, this always extra bit.
Facebook as well because they're all watching. So.
That's fine.
So that puts that to rest and I can plant my, my veggies in.
One hundred percent. So you take.
Just not next to the river.
Don't believe everything you read on Facebook.
But I've seen some raised beds on the top of some, uh, brownstones down in Boston. Is that what we're talking about?
It's just hogwash.
Go ahead, Annette.
My question is, we pay high property taxes. A lot of people pay more over by the lakes and everything. Why can't we do what we want with our property when we pay so high taxes and we can't do hardly anything with our property? There's a zoning for this, there's zoning for that, law for this, a rule for this, a rule for that. When are we gonna have some freedom where we can put something on our property or do something with our property after we're paying all these high taxes? We can't do hardly anything with our properties. Why is that?
Cause back in nineteen eighty-something.
Seven.
Okay, we put zoning into place, rules and regulations for our town. It's right here in this book. It's been changed every year since and that's the rule of our town. That's what we gotta go by. So if we wanna abolish zoning, you need a warrant article come in and you abolish zoning. But I don't think that's gonna happen because there's a lot of, I think, reasonable people in town that say we need something. But there's some things that we may not need.
Want this, want the perfect properties and my, my little.
It's not his house.
So I think I can, I think I can help maybe. So I think generally speaking, like the purpose of zoning is to protect property owners. So you as a property owner wouldn't necessarily want your next door neighbor to put in a, um, a nuclear waste facility.
If that's what he wants, that's not my business.
So it is though, because if, if your next door neighbor put in a nuclear waste facility, no one's gonna buy your property. So your property goes, devalues.
Buy my property anyway because there's a bridge that's up.
So again, I'm talking, I'm talking in generalities though.
We get that though. That's the biggest reason why zoning is. That is the building.
First of all, I live in this town because it's the third lowest town in the state of New Hampshire for taxes. You, you're not fine to find any other town that you pay as low taxes, especially if you don't live on the waterfront. Number two, whatever your project in, please come in and see us. We will help you. We will do all we can to guide you to get your project through, through what the ordinance is.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just saying in, in general, it sounds like no one can do anything with their property without someone planning about it.
If, if there's something specific that you'd like to have done, let us, nothing?
Okay.
I'm good.
In closing, don't believe everything you read over these books.
But, but, but Annette does want a bridge.
I want a bridge. Like our bridge, yes, we would, but we're still working on it.
You get it.
No, but I'm serious. If there's, you know, you come down and sit in the area and we will.
Your page?
That's what we're there.
It's one of them.
My page is clean.
I think it may get caught up in the social media. A lot of people say that, but when it comes to, well, what specifically are you talking about? Well, it's just general, all the ordinances. So.
There are some people that don't.
So I, I just want to, we're more involved with the house and residents.
Absolutely. And it's not clear enough to say people can't do anything. But it does seem like there's more and more regulations.
It's a lot of time. It does seem like that.
We do.
We know exactly.
We do, but these guys are in the forefront. They get all the stuff thrown at them because they have to enforce this book.
All right. Also in eighty-eight, I just want to make a comment. Eighty-eight, eighty-seven, we were building a log home on Access Road. And yes, my parents and I lived in a camper throughout the whole year. The winter, we came up all weekend. Sometimes we stayed three, four weeks. Sometimes we stayed two or three months, depending. But I'm just saying that, that would you rather have homeless people freezing instead of being in a camper?
State of New Hampshire, R S A, federal law, people to live in campers year round.
Well, maybe we need to change that rule.
Well, we need to speak with the state legislators.
Right.
We understand that.
All right.
I'm just saying.
Anything new?
That's not.
Okay, uh, looking for approval of the minutes of May sixth.
I'll load.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, no objections. Everybody was here, maybe. Any other correspondence? Victor?
No, sir.
Any other public comment other than what we already discussed? Go ahead, Vic.
Go Bruins.
Oh, go Bruins, okay. Any other public comment other than we've already discussed? Jim, you got anything?
What?
Any other comments? Jim, we haven't heard from you tonight?
Yeah.
Well, I just, I think that one thing, uh, that.
Commentary, please, from Jim. Can you state your name for the record and get.
Yeah, stand in front of the camera.
Behind a camera, you all know the way. Uh, you know, the other reason part of this zoning is to protect the environment, you know, that's, that's a big part of it. And, and we have our precious lakes in this town that we have to be very careful of because, you know, we don't wanna go damaging them. And I think the other thing that, that I would really like to see clarified is, you know, we talked about social media. And these two guys sitting at this table are doing a job that they've been told to do, which is to enforce the zoning ordinance that has been voted. So they're not like randomly picking on people and, and reinterpreting things their own way, which is sometimes alleged on, on, you know, social media and stuff. And I think that the, people need to understand that if they weren't enforcing these rules, which is their job, we wouldn't be wanting them to do their job. You know, they'd be fired because it's their job to enforce these and, and try to make it equal for everyone.
Well said, Jim.
Thank you. All right, sit back down.
All right, uh. Anything else before the board?
You don't need me back again ever, do you, Eric?
Thought you were getting the list.
I'm making it for him because he didn't write anything down.
I haven't been here for, you know, I've been here on and off for, I don't know, a long time.
Well, we haven't changed anything.
Two, seven years. It's been longer than that.
It's been longer than that.
But I'm here, I'm available if you need me, but I, you haven't, you haven't really called on me lately.
Yeah, right. Well, like, like I think, you know, the, the eight law subdivision that was in, Mike should have snuck a peek at that.
Yeah, agreed.
But, you know, Vic, Vic's.
That was not the chair.
That's probably the first one that came in.
Was on that one?
Yeah, that was the first one that came in too, as far as a bigger project that.
I just need to know that there might be an anticipated, you know, need for me because if there, if there is, then I can make sure I have time and budgets for that.
We've got a couple of smart fellows now.
Guy, you know, I like to, you know, be with my kids and work sometimes.
Yeah, try and keep the budget down.
I understand.
Saving the taxpayer dollars, money.
You know, you're not cheap.
My talk is cheap.
Yeah, that, that could be a true statement, but your pocket ain't cheap, I'll tell you. That's okay though.
Cheaper than making a mistake.
Yeah.
That's true. Get it done right the first time.
You got it, Michael.
I'll entertain a motion.
You got it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.